Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Plenary Board meeting. October 4th. Right now, I just take the call to order and do a quorum call. Ms. Delicio?
Yeah.
Ms. D'Almi?
Here.
Ms. Creighton?
Here.
Ms. Penny?
Here.
Okay, we have five members. We have a quorum present. And this meeting is to go over continuing on the recodification effort. And at this point, I'd like to turn the meeting over to our Vice Chair, Sarah Creighton.
Yeah. Great, thank you. I'm gonna open the continued, take a motion to open the continued public hearing for the purposes of discussing the zoning changes.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
More seconds. Gail, is Gail here?
I think so.
I think that's the 207. Great, hi, Gail. I've rolled the call. One of you might need to mute. I'm getting an echo.
The host mutes himself. That's why we're hearing echo.
Okay. So on the... Ron, are you muted?
Uh, I don't want to mute myself.
You got it?
Down here.
Let's join audio.
Okay, great, great, great. Still, oh, now can you mute yourself? Am I the problem?
Might be you, Sarah.
Wait, I'm sorry.
Join with computer.
All right.
I had to mute myself. So you exit out of this window. Yeah, press the X. This join audio.
I'm with the phone call.
Join with computer audio.
No.
I give you that choice?
I'm already on the phone.
Oh, okay, say, "Got it."
Okay, let's try that again.
Okay.
Okay, so, we all right?
I'm muted. I'm muted.
Yeah, we have an audio button. Oh, Christina, you're... Yeah, he looks like you're joining. Okay.
Okay, let's try that. Just see, I know you didn't really change anything, but I changed his.
Okay. So we'll take a... We have a motion from Chris and a second from Laura to open the continue, continued public hearing. Laura? Can we roll call vote?
Yes.
I vote yes.
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 Yes, okay. Still getting an echo. Okay, great. Tonight, we have a lot to do, but they're all focused on the zoning, proposed zoning changes. We want to get through the rest, come back to our articles and motions. We want to talk about the communications plan. And we want to actually finalize the warrant if we can. We actually have two weeks to get that finalized, but the warrant... There's still some echo here.
Yeah, there is.
Yeah, I think it's someone in the Zoom call with us.
Oh, can you ask them?
Shouldn't you?
He thinks me?
I think you.
Oh, might be Gail.
But me, or everyone that's not speaking.
Okay. No, but she's not, she has no, I think she's trying to...
Like, I turned my mic off, like, in the other set. Like, I can't even unmute myself or mute myself because it's, like, shut off. Does that make sense?
But we can hear you.
You should.
Thank you.
Okay, Gail, are you muted?
Um, I'm unmuted, but then I mute on my phone.
Okay.
I am unmuted at the moment.
I think the echo's gone. I think we're good.
I think it's better, okay. Anyway, we need to... Those are the main things we need to do tonight. Sounds like only a few, but it's actually quite a bit. So we have one major section that we have, of the bylaw, general bylaw changes, that we have not addressed at all. So I thought we would start with that, and that is the general bylaw section. Those moves to the general bylaw. So that is Article number four. So I'm hoping people have looked at. So I think that there may be some general discussion and then maybe some specific discussion. We did not receive any motions for changes to that section. Oh, it's actually Article 2, I'm sorry. So there are three...
Pick a red eye too. Return that box tomorrow.
Oh. Jack, can you mute yourself, please?
I can do that.
Okay, thank you. Now three, now let's start with junk cars. Then we have the driveway entrances, stormwater, I think are the main pieces. So are there any discussion on the junk car section? Okay. Driveway entrances, a new section 45 to Article 10, police and other regulations. Discussion on this. One question came up from Mary, but I think it came up from Christine in passing as well. Would there be an application, a new application form for curb cuts? And I went back to, this curb cut moved the general bylaw predates Laura and me, the whole discussion and working group. So I went back to the meeting minutes, meeting packets from long ago and found an example application. So I think that there is one out there, but whether it's ready for primetime, I haven't looked at it. All I did was print it. So that is, can be done, this echo is terrible.
Yeah, I signed out, so it's not me, just to make sure it wasn't me, but yeah.
I can sign out too, to make sure it's not me. Because I don't need to be on right now.
Do you want to try muting your laptop?
I'm just gonna sign out.
Do you need the sound on your laptop? Could you just cut the sound off on your laptop?
Whatever, I just signed out, it might have been me.
Okay.
And if I need to share anything, I can sign back on. It's not me. So there is a form that you guys came up with two years ago, and I printed it out, but I think that is separate from the bylaw, as I understand. We don't need to have the form in the general bylaw. So the question was asked, is there a form? And there is one that has been floating around for two years. If anybody wants to see it, it asks...
So the question then is, who now is in charge of it? Who is going to come up with the form? I think our last meeting, we denied something. There's still a lot of gray areas to me. So moving this when we already still have gray areas is really concerning, especially without clear indication who's going to be in charge, who's going to create this form, and who will be giving input on this form. So I like the idea, I just don't think it's ready for primetime.
So I have a couple of points to make on this. The first is, there's a lot of, a little bit of confusion about what the DPW can approve for a driveway.
In the new bylaw.
In the new bylaw. And it's clear, but it could be made more broad. For example, if there's a second driveway, that has to come to the planning board. So the DPW can only do one curb cut per property.
So if there's already one?
They have to come to the planning board for a second.
So I guess these are the things that we still have to...
No, that's all, it's all in the bylaw. There's another which says that the driveway width cannot be wider than, I think it's...
Twelve.
Twelve feet and can't be narrower than eight feet. And that it should have a turnaround if possible. And, but there are things we could add. We could say it has to come in at a perpendicular angle to the street or an angle no less than 72 degrees, which means you have a little bit of a, of a not straight on, but not more than a certain amount. We could also say that the slope has to be, say, less than 8% within 20 feet of the edge of the road. There are things like that we could add if we wanted to. I think the DPW is perfectly capable of determining that. But if people would feel more comfortable with more constraints, that would be okay.
So the other thing is, where is the impervious being captured then? So if this is coming after the fact, and this is new construction, who's capturing, if this is going over districts' impervious? And then what happens? I just feel like there's too much behind the scenes, things that we haven't thought about, logistics, that are not, that aren't narrowed out.
So does your suggestion to table this issue and keep it in where it is? Or do you have specific suggestions on how to...
I don't think we have time to make suggestions and fix it.
Well, I think we, that's what we're trying to do tonight. I think there are two suggestions I would make. One is on line 39, which says there shall normally be not more than one apron and curb cut per residential lot. We just strike the word "normally." That would be a six, I guess I'll make that as a motion, to strike the word "normally" so that we have one curb cut. Any objections to striking the word "normally" in line 39? Okay, great, hearing none. Then the second one, I think, should be to add in that regulation of driveway entrances or applicability, maybe under applicability, all new and relocated driveway entrances for all land uses should require permit issued by the Department of Public Works or the Planning Board. This permit should be separate in addition to any building permit or site plan review that may otherwise be required. On lots where impervious surface will exceed the required, the maximum requirement in the district, the Planning Board shall be the issuing authority.
Why don't we just make the impervious surface part of the form that requires other, you know, it's on the plan and it's on, just as you would with any zoning table. You put the amount of impervious surface on your application to show that you're compliant with the district that you're in. And it simply needs to comply. Whether it comes before or after, it still needs to comply with the impervious surface coverage. And who's doing that? You're just saying it, it's your word? No, I'm saying we put it in... No, no, I wasn't even, no, I wasn't like jumping, but do we require a plan? Is it an architectural...
Just like any other...
Well, we're not loosey-goosey. We kind of... No, we're not loosey-goosey. No, we've got a reg here. I think we can make some modifications. What I'm, I do not want to put things on the table for some future unknown date when they, we're trying to strengthen our regs here and have better environmental controls that are easier for people to understand. These are changes that we can make reasonably right now, I think, by, let's say what we need. Maybe it needs to have a site plan and the form, which we don't need to develop tonight, can, just like all the other forms, you know, have a checkbox for amount of impervious service and percent on the lot. You know, those, I think we can develop those forms, but we don't need to do it here. And then the building inspector, DPW, whomever we decide as a regulatory authority can oversee that process, just like the other ones. Maybe there's a sequence question about when we want to see... So my point is, we literally are loosey-goosey. The last application, we had a handwritten note saying this was the impervious. That was my example, not saying this is loosey-goosey, like what we expect and... So we're trying to make this better, I think, right? Are we all the same? We have things, and we don't pay attention to what we have right now. So...
Excuse me, I didn't, but what I, I think that things are loosey-goosey anyway. There's nothing to tell anyone that they can't just pave a, an area in their backyard for a playground for their kids. There's no form to fill out, there's no permit to get, you just go do it. And if you're in violation of the, of the lot coverage requirement, unless somebody complains, we're not going to know about it. That's just the nature of the game.
So the point of this whole exercise is to make that more not neighbor against neighbor, make it clear. And make it so that if you do want to pave something, that there are clear expectations that you do go get a permit, and this is what your impervious is in the neighborhood. I mean, that was our job. So saying there's nothing there is maybe a red flag that we should have put something there.
So I think the application form might be the best way to accomplish that. Because we, just because we say that the building inspector or the DPW who's going to regulate lot coverage doesn't mean it's going to happen.
That is my exact point.
But there's no way we can, there's nothing we can do to change that.
Well, when it's in front of us, we actually ask for it. I mean, it's on the form and we review it. So I don't understand why... When you say the building permit, you need to give the required information to satisfy the building inspector.
So sometimes, sometimes as we saw the other day, driveway curb cuts are independent of the building permit.
Right, I'm just using that as an example. So if there's a checklist that's required, an application form that's required with your curb cut, and it becomes more prescriptive about what the requirements are that you have to demonstrate and then meet, then having the regulation in the right place so the DPW can enforce it, and then it's got the backup required.
Right.
Then it only needs to come to us when it's the second curb cut or there's some other, it's part of the special permit, whatever.
So I think there are a couple of distinct issues. One is, should it be in the general bylaw? And I would argue it should be because it has more applicability than in the zoning. And the second is, who's the enforcement agent? This proposal is the DPW. It is currently the Planning Board. So that's a separate issue. And you got...
Just so you know, currently it's not the planning board, it's the Board of Selectmen, but they have delegated it to the planning board, which is why we're in this...
Okay, which is why we're in this mess. And then the third issue is, what are the requirements? And how do we, particularly around lot coverage, and how does the town be protected on that particular issue? And it seems to me that the lot coverage, those that have, exceed the lot coverage requirements need to, even if they comply, well...
Well, there's exceeding the lot coverage, and then there's the number of curb cuts, right? If one curb cut is the default.
Right.
And yet have to demonstrate the need for a second curb cut. I mean, I think our, our regulation is a little soft on the one curb cut right now because we kind of suggest it, but...
So...
So the other thing is, our current application says curb cut driveway, and we do nothing for driveways, to your point. I mean, I feel like this all should have been part of it, not just curb cuts.
So what do we say, what do we go from now? Here, do nothing? Or do we continue to move this forward and try to strengthen it now? Those are the two options we have, right? Or change us, change it so that we are, remain the enforcement agent because we have confidence in ourselves over the DPW? And those are sort of, to criticize what we're doing right now, we need to figure out, so what do we do?
I think it needs to be limited to one, strengthen that language. I think we need to include as-built, and I think it needs to include the driveway. Because if you have something, you just pave it, and there's no record of that, and they actually want to go build something else, a detached garage. There's no way for us to keep tracking this in the system. I just don't think we're doing a good job, and we're opening things up, and there's no paper trail anymore. Instead of like creating one and making it more uniform, we're just kind of... When you say driveway, what are you, what are you looking for there? Amount of impervious or the alignment, or just trying to understand what you... Impervious, so I mean, we don't, like, the application says curb cut driveway, and we do nothing for driveway. So someone could, they don't need a building permit, they could just go, if they had a gravel driveway, because of impervious, they could just go pave it. There is nothing stopping them besides someone of their neighbors knowing that they might be over... You're saying if they pave it later, like, if they come and they get a curb cut or the, and they make a piece down.
We have no control.
But how do we regulate that?
So maybe there should be...
We do though, Ron, we do. We have control over impervious surface, I guess.
No, but if someone goes and paves their driveway, how do we know about that?
Without getting a permit, right. But that's the point.
We're not out driving around town looking, we're not police.
No, but our driveway curb cut should include it. So at least it's something that says, okay, I'm going to pave my driveway, and here's the application, and this is the amount that I'm going to pave, and I'm not over. Like, I feel like we're missing a lot of it.
So maybe there should be a separate bylaw about impervious surface.
There is, we do.
Not in the zoning bylaw, in the general bylaw.
That's the stormwater, at least in part.
Well, maybe, yeah, maybe that's, maybe that's what we need to rely on, is the stormwater management section of the bylaw, which becomes a general bylaw, by the way.
Right, that's the point. So we're not making anything, and we can go back and look at the stormwater bylaw and see if that's doing what we're trying to make it do. But right now, we're just aligning with state standards.
This, this we just, was done two years ago and has had no change since we did it two years ago. Since I've been on the board, we've had a few, maybe fewer than we did when you, I think you guys were going out looking at driveways every day of the week. So maybe you could at least explain what led to this, to start with.
We thought that this should be better placed in the hand of a professional engineer to design.
That we're not competent to determine.
We're not really, present company excluded, we're not engineers, we're, you know, we're not going to be enforcing these driveway issues. So we thought, the committee thought that it would be better placed in the hands of a professional engineer to go out and look at it, either Chuck or maybe...
I agree with that, and I really still do think that if we had a letter and a checklist from Chuck, it would make our lives so much easier actually approving them. I think that's almost a better solution. Chuck goes out, he says, "I don't have a problem with this, this, this." He sends his report back to us, and we go forward. I do think there's some logistics issues with us just turning this over and us not figuring out, a lot of people come to us last minute. This should be a first thing on the planning stop for a new construction. So I do think that we're turning this over, knowing all the things that we've been seeing in the last year that we need to fix.
So we're not inventing a new wheel here. Every other town and city in Massachusetts, with a few exceptions, have the driveway entrances approved by the Department of Public Works.
Okay. I'm not disagreeing with that, but I'm sure that they're not coming at the end of the project, after the house is built and the driveway is built, asking if you can get into that location of the property that the whole project was designed around.
Right.
So there's certain things that we need to fix before we turn it over, in my opinion.
So what if in, under administration and enforcement, there is a first paragraph that indicates that a driveway application, you know, before work commences, a driveway application shall be submitted to the department, to the DPW with a copy to the Planning Board, just, we can get a copy of it. And such application shall be developed by the Planning Board and reviewed from time to time. And then, and then we can, anybody, we can make this application reflect that we have pervious surface and impervious surface and lot coverage and zone, you know, all of the things that we want to see. And it still goes to the DPW, but we develop that application, and that when they're submitted, they come, a copy comes to us.
So I have an alternative, which is pretty much the same thing, but a little broader, which says that the Planning Board may establish regulations on how driveway entrances are designed and approved, and those regulations can be changed from time to time.
So that's, that's an application and regulations.
Sure, yeah.
And then it, then, see, we had this opportunity November 14th to move this ahead, and between either now and November 14th, or after November 14th on an ongoing basis, we can get an application and regulations. That seems like a good idea.
So how are we going to capture the impervious?
In the stormwater management section.
No, like, in the file, like, so you have a home, then you want to have a second curb cut, and you're driving, you're paving it, and then you want to apply for a swimming pool. Where is this all going to be added? We don't get previous applications brought to us. No one goes digging through the files, like, where is this going to be kept? Who's keeping tabs on this?
I don't know, who do you think should be?
I mean, I just don't think that we should be turning it over to someone else until we figure this out.
Well, I don't think anyone's capturing that, this stuff now, not us.
So is that the good answer, about your answer? It's like, who cares? No one else is doing it now?
That was not his answer.
My question was, who should be doing this?
But your answer was, no one is doing it.
No, no, then...
Who should be doing...
Going forward, what's the suggestion?
Who should be doing it?
I feel like we're adding more hours to staff, and we're volunteer board, we're adding more hours to people, and we're not, in my opinion, getting things together as a package now. So I don't think that's the right place. I, I don't think at this time, our town has the capability to organize things and get them out. I think we ask the right questions. I don't know if putting it out in three different departments, people are going to communicate, just like the ZBA and CONCOM and us on the last application.
So what is the suggestion to remedy the problem?
I think we're, we need to figure it out, and I don't think rushing it through again is the time.
No, we're not rushing it through. This has been on the table for two years.
And we haven't talked about it like this in two years.
Well, so we have this opportunity to make it have broader applicability by moving into the general bylaws. Do you want to just keep it with no change, which is in...
I thought we voted this group to vote...
We voted, it was voted.
Thought we voted it, we had a subcommittee on the curb cuts.
We did.
With Chuck, Paul.
Yeah, we did, but you can't, like, I'm asking you.
We were in the board, and there wasn't any pushback on it. I, I don't know.
So curb cut regulations are currently 6.2% of it.
They're extremely big. And the only...
Why not take the opportunity to strengthen our regulations now? And the permitting housekeeping, which falls under the building inspector, is not our domain. I mean, I think we're, we're here to strengthen the regulations, not solve the...
This wouldn't be in front of the building inspector, which is kind of my concern. And if it was, he's not here enough to enforce it. So the building inspector has said over and over, he has nothing to do with driveways. He has to do with buildings.
The only criteria we have for approving a driveway entrance right now is drainage and safety. That's all we have. And we're not experts in safety, so I don't, you know, I'm not competent in saying, well...
That's why we send a letter to every department and ask their opinion before an application comes. I mean, that's our...
For a driveway, we certainly don't.
We're supposed to. I mean, that's the special permit, we're supposed to send something out.
It's not a special permit, that's the problem.
It's a curb cut.
It's a curb cut approval, delegated to us by the Board of Selectmen, the vice selectmen.
So the current language says, "No person shall conduct a driveway or entrance." Simply, that's from the, from the traveled portion of the cur, or from the curve of any street to a way open to public use for the purposes of passing to or from abutting property or cutting any curbing, under blah, blah, blah. The applicant shall, at least seven days prior to filing the application, mail a notice in the form specified by the Planning Board to all property owners within 100 feet of the locus of the driveway. And B, shall certify if such an application that notice has been mailed. And C, attach an application of names and address of that was filed. And this subsection should not apply to construction of any street in something, whether, that's it. That just says they have to...
Notify their abutters.
I mean, unless there's some other section that tells what the, what the, there may be under parking, so...
Something on width and...
No, there's nothing on width.
Minimum width is 12 feet.
There is in the subdivision law.
Right, so we are significantly, if we add a, to Chris's suggestion, in that section D, prior to, you know, the driveway and curb cut application... Uh, the cur- the driveway and curb cut application. Uh, the, the applicant must. Must submit. A driveway curb cut application.
Actually, I think entrance is better, because we don't have any real curb cuts.
Driveway and. Entrance. Um, said application. And. Associated regulations shall be developed by the planning board. And modified from time to time. So we are, my suggestion is to say something, under administration and enforcement. To add a paragraph that says, yeah, we'll re- we'll repeat this, so don't try to get it down. The applicant must submit a driveway entrance application, said application associated regulations shall be developed by. Uh, the planning board, um, and modified. From time to time, and may be modified. Modified, modified. From time to time. So then, um, that application could say. All the things that we like to see on the plans, the, we could incorporate the current abutter notification.
No, I wouldn't do that.
What?
I wouldn't, but why would the abutters?
Well, we could, I'm just saying, we, I'm not saying we, we could, we could ask for it on paper if we want. We.
True.
The scope of what we ask for is to be determined. Um, so, right now, it seems like we have, um, yeah, this is an opportunity to have it have broader applicability. And then, um, and those regulations, so.
And to Christina's point on the form, I could say, what zone are you in, what is the lot coverage requirement, how much of your lot is currently covered?
Right, and those regulations can say, if you have, if you are going to exceed the lot coverage requirements, then you have to.
Seek approval from the bylaw.
Seek approval. Or seek remedy.
So you're making this amendment to six two seven?
No, this would be, this is, this is an amendment to the, uh, general bylaw motion. So it's strengthening, it is doing a couple of things, one is making broader applicability by putting it in the general bylaws. Second, it is transferring the. Standard curb cuts to a DPW, with the more complicated ones remaining with us. And thirdly, it's giving us the authority to make and modify curb cut regulations outside of the town meeting process.
How do we capture new construction?
Well, if someone builds a house, they have to get a driveway entrance approved.
At the end, I want it in the beginning, how do we capture that?
So we can put that into a section twelve and say that prior to seeking a building permit, where the zoning, zoning bylaws regulating building permits. The building inspector shall.
He doesn't do anything with this, I think we're.
Well, we can't, well, we.
So we have to, what's remedy?
We can't do it either.
What's, we have to figure out how to fix it, not just, just, if we have something that's broken, it's, we can't throw up our hands and say, don't do anything.
No, no, I was just throwing it out there for minds to think, but the building inspector's not the person that's gonna do it, um. I'm actually even okay with the ZBA saying, like, if you're gonna move the project, I don't know where we put that language though, if the ZBA is building or doing something. Someone's gotta capture it before the plan is approved and you have no other way to remedy the driveway, that's what I'm trying to capture.
The only, you might say that the building inspector cannot approve a building permit. With a driveway entrance unless that driveway entrance has been approved.
Uh, maybe, yeah, no building, I, I mean.
Yeah, that would work.
That would work.
Yeah.
So moved.
Okay, that's.
You wanna, you wanna add that to the curb cut?
Yeah.
Could be the easiest thing.
Uh, no, I think it goes in the, uh.
That would probably be.
Goes in section twelve, I think.
Well. So this, we actually have this in here, the applicability is this permit should be separate and in addition to any building permit or site plan review that may be otherwise required. Let's add it as a second sentence there, um, in addition to. In addition to any site plan review and prior to any building permit.
Sure.
So in addition to, and, in addition to.
Prior to the issuance of any building.
I'm gonna change the order there, site plan review and prior to any building permit.
So I'm, I'm just trying to.
Yeah.
Think this through, so anytime you're getting a building permit. Which may have nothing to do with a connection to a driveway, is it a box you check on the building permit form that says, I'm planning a driveway, yes, no?
Yes, yeah, sure.
Yeah. Prior to any bu- building permit, or I will require, yeah, it's really only the changing of the curb cut, right, I'm moving the curb cut or I'm doing something to change the curb cut. If I've got a new.
Yeah, we're building a new house on a created parcel of land and.
How about any applicable building permit, how do you define that though? Just, I'm just, yeah, trying to chase it through a little bit to understand it.
Or any building permit requiring a driveway entrance.
A new.
A new or altered driveway entrance.
Altered driveway entrance, yeah.
Okay, so. Okay, so we have three amendments to the section for you.
And I think there's one more, sorry.
Okay.
Line forty-two. Which currently says residential uses are encouraged to utilize only one driveway entrance, with two entrances being the maximum allowable, am I looking at the current?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so that we would change. To residential uses shall utilize only one driveway entrance. Period. If two entrances. Um, uh.
Yeah.
Two entrances are.
Would require, will require.
More, more than one entrance would require planning board approval.
Actually, that's already in there.
Then we could just strike it, just like, no, you're talking about.
Yeah, you can just strike that sentence and. At, at the very end it says.
It's almost on thirty-nine there, so normally be not more than one apron if you got rid of a residential lot, so you got rid of normally.
Okay. Okay, so we're gonna end it, uh, shall, or, okay, so let me summarize our changes here. The first is B, line thirty-two. Um, the sentence reads, this permit shall be separate. And in addition to any site plan review and prior to any building permit requiring a new or altered driveway. Uh, I guess that should be a site plan review that.
Isn't it part of a site plan review?
No.
No. You don't wanna see it at the same time that you're doing the site plan review.
So doing the site plan review, that's true.
That's the CBA's argument on the last one, they did and it wasn't there, so this is where I'm really trying to make sure that we're. Capturing all of this, they did and it wasn't there, so now what?
So I'm gonna rephrase this.
Right, I was just trying to require it to be part of the site plan review.
They did, that's why they're, this is, I think, a loophole.
Okay, let's, um, let's, we're trying to solve the loophole, so the first thing is, um, line thirty-one and thirty-two, new, new, new try here. This permit shall be separate and in addition to any required. Site plan review and prior to any building permit requiring a new or altered driveway or entrance. So that's the first change, the second change is to strike normally in line thirty-nine, so there shall be not more than one apron and curb cut. And in line forty-two. We're gonna strike after residential uses.
Shall.
Shall. Strike are encouraged to utilize and insert shall, only one driveway entrance, period, strike the rest of that sentence. Which is the remainder of line forty-two and forty-three. And lastly. In D, administration and enforcement, we are going to add a first sentence that says, the applicant must submit a driveway entrance. Application, driveway slash entrance application, said application and associated regulations shall be developed by the planning board and may be modified from time to time. Such, such application shall be subject to regulations developed. Right, such application shall be subject to. So now we've fixed all of the, not all, but. Thank you, regulations, so I'll read that again, the application must submit a driveway slash entrance application. Said application shall be subject to regulations developed by the planning board and modified from time to time.
Read that first word, what did you say, the applicant?
Uh, applicant.
The applicant.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, um, I think we've, I think that strengthens it. Um, I'll take a motion to accept all those changes.
Did we say the applicant or the owner?
Same thing.
Not really.
Well, I mean.
It could be a developer.
Could be a developer.
Applicant slash owner, applicant and or or.
Or the applicant or his representative.
The owner or.
Yeah.
Why not just the applicant plus?
Well. The applicant on Arbella may not have been the owner, I'm finding out, you know.
Right, the owner or their owner.
Hmm, that's interesting.
Yeah, I don't think the one on. The one on the corner near C Street, is that it? I don't think that one was either.
But can we ever require them to not be the owner, I mean, why, someone's gotta be applicant, right?
Owner has to apply for it.
Yeah, I think owners, um, Paul said the owner was the applicant for everything, that's, I, I had that conversation with him.
It is the.
Yeah. Okay, um, so I have a motion for, um, Chris, did you move that?
No, Christine.
Christine, and then did you second that?
I seconded.
That's on too, okay, any other discussion? Um, all in favor?
I can.
All opposed, any opposed, okay, passes, oh, how many of us are there, one, two, three, five to nothing. Okay, uh, storage of commercial vehicles and materials, um, this is really just moving this from the, um. Zoning into, um. The general bylaws and we kinda went, we've, we've massaged this, whether it's perfect is. Any, any discussion there? Okay, hearing none, um, and then we've moved the stormwater special permit into this bylaw and have basically taken all of Chuck's. Um, uh, requirements from DEP and made them. This, now, I'm sure that as we think about climate change and resilience. We could make this stronger, but it is. My opinion that we are stra- strategic to simply say this is required by DPW to become in compliance. It is performance based and it is now broader applicability and that we move it forward pretty much, unless we have specific things that really are.
I think it came state, state language, yeah.
So.
Questions? Yeah, go ahead, sure.
Um, so if the. If in time we, we or some other board thinks about, uh, more resiliency and say we wanna have, uh. We wanna change the design storm, so we wanna say it's the twenty, twenty seventy, one hundred year storm that you have to design to, and you have to. Make twenty-five year flood equal, you know, the two year flood prior, and we wanna put in some conditions like that which will. Reduce potentially beyond what the state has required for quantity and quality reasons. Either to protect the watershed or prevent flooding or, you know, whatever the case may be. Do we come back and revisit the regulation, do we, do we put in a clause like we did for curb cuts that says the planning board shall over time?
I think in this case we wanna modify the regulations. Now, I've gone through two projects with the two schools that, with the planning board, site plan review, we're, or the CONCOM, or both, I think. Where, who was the, a third party was, was, uh, contracted by the town to review the stormwater. For the state compliance and compliance with local bylaws and it was quite extensive. It does not address the, if we wanna make a, a storm, the applicable storm, um, more stringent.
And that is the only way we will get at.
Resilience.
Resiliency.
For new.
For new, yeah, I mean, it's a question of how you know, how you apply this to retrofit as well.
Well, by moving it to the general bylaws, to the point, to Chris's point, I got ten acres, let's say, and I wanna. Dig out back or pave or modify this, the topography so that it runs off. I can do that now without, because I'm not getting a building permit and I'm not getting a site plan review.
You're landscaping.
I'm landscaping, and now it applies to me in the general bylaws, so we've, by moving this to the general bylaws, we take a big step toward. Um, toward, uh, having a broader applicability.
Does this have a trigger such as, you know, an acre of disturbance or whatever the?
Earth removal.
Earth removal.
I think it's the, the flow of ground blocking.
Wanna dig a big hole.
Applicability, no person shall undertake construction activity. Including clearing, grading and excavating the results of a land disturbance that will disturb equal to or greater than one acre of land and will disturb less than one acre of land but is part of a larger common plan of development. That will disturb equal to or greater than one acre of land draining into the town's municipal separate stormwater system. Activities of land use, that's the first, activities of land use that require a special permit.
Yeah, so the one acre is typical. I mean, this is a huge improvement from where we're at right now in terms of the controls on it and, uh, and moving it to the general, so it is more applicable.
Yeah, I mean, I think it needs.
Might be the place to start, I think we're just, you know, as a board, we'll wanna think about resiliency going forward.
Yeah.
You'll be fine.
Yeah, we don't have the time with right now to take, I don't know, talk about it.
Yeah, yeah, okay. And it still keeps it with us, I guess.
Yeah.
Um, okay, any other comments on that, this article two moves to the general bylaw? Okay, great, um, I should have started, uh, by saying, this is for. I did, as we agreed last meeting, um, send to town council those articles which we had already pretty much wrapped up. So this one came down in a second batch, um, those were the, uh, change, the. Basically one. Three, which is the delete and renumber. Four, five, six, um, yeah, so all except for the, the housing ones. And the non-conformers.
Non-conformers, yeah, so what are the non-conformers, Dan?
Okay, so.
Can we do a non-conforming?
Sure, let's go do non-conforming, so we're talking about article seven, Dan.
Okay, I have become the world's expert on non-conforming uses in this town. And it's not a happy picture, but, uh, I wanna read you the current bylaw because, uh, it's not very long. And kinda sets the stage for this whole thing. It says, and this is just one part of it, because this is about changes to non-conforming uses. A non-conforming structure or use may be changed, extended or altered. Provided that in each case, the Board of Appeals grants a special permit, therefore, after finding that such change, extension or alteration. Is not substantially more detrimental or injurious to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming structure or use. The above requirement, however, does not apply to such an extension, alteration, reconstruction or structural change. To a single family or two-family residential structure that does not increase the non-conforming nature of that structure. In other words, we're allowed now to modify, uh, non-conforming houses, one and two-bedroom houses. Without going to get a special permit under the terms.
One and two-family houses.
Pardon?
You said one and two-bedroom, one and two-family.
One and two-family houses, I said one and two-family houses.
I thought it said didn't apply.
I thought it said didn't apply to one and two.
So that's right, so you don't have to get a special, what applies is a special permit from the ZBA. But this language is so vague and so convoluted that it's very hard for the building inspector to make that determination. And so he says, if you're going to change a non-conforming house, go get a goddamn special permit. Because I can't make that determination. What the, where, what Bobrowski is proposing is clarification as to when you get a special permit. When can you do it without a special permit, when do you need a variance? And so that's what this is all about.
So we're really not changing.
We're not?
We're clarifying not changing because the, the less detrimental language is in the current bylaw.
Correct. We're not, yes, we're clarifying not changing.
And the other.
Much easier for the building inspector to say, okay, this one you, go ahead and put that dormer on a set. Not going to make.
The de minimis changes.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, that's helpful.
Did we hear back from town council on my question?
On the case law, we did not, I asked.
No, 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 um.
The question I think that I was asked to ask was what are the case laws that were now, that this will now help us comply with?
Specifically, if you had this ranch home that was in the setback, could you put a second floor? That was my question.
So we can clarify, I think I, we can clarify that with, uh, uh, by changing one or two words in this proposed language.
Oh, that wasn't my question though, my question was town council, like I wanted that opinion.
So currently it's not clear and this is not clear, it doesn't say one way or the other.
So we should make it clear.
So we want to make it clear and the.
I didn't ask that question.
And the clarification would to say that any part of a building that's going to be extending a non-conforming use is going to require a special permit.
Not just extending a wall.
Not just a wall, but just extending a building in any direction, up, down, sideways, whatever.
So the concern here then is less detrimental, right?
That's already in the bylaw.
But you mean that's not the point?
My concern with this is the second story in the setback. And by right, no neighborhoods, no going up, this is like really my only concern with this one and I, I.
So we have the clause that was, it's in the setback, you can't do that.
So here, here are the three, here are the three things that could happen.
Yeah.
You have a house sitting in the setback, you want to put a second story on it. Let's say you're sitting over ten feet into the setback.
I know, we've heard, like, I don't want you to rehash it, I understand all that, I get that, I know, I get that. But my thing is can you put a whole second stories and that's the conversation that we've been having.
You can only do that if you meet all the setback requirements in the law.
So the answer is no, but we need to clarify it, it's this vague extension of a wall.
But the answer is no, you can't.
And I, I really do want, once we write this, I want town councils, I want to give that example and say, could they do this? Because we're taking away neighbors' input, we're taking away notice and we're taking away input.
That's true.
But we're taking away appeal ability.
However, if they tore down the house and built a new two-story house meeting all the setback requirements, they wouldn't have to talk to anyone.
But these don't, right, and this is in the setback.
That's right, and that's, it's in the.
Those are two different situations.
So it's in the setback because when the house was built, there were no setback requirements and now there are. So we've essentially by putting a setback requirement.
Well, I don't think that's a really broad blanket statement saying that there were no or, I don't think we can say that with certainty for every application that's going to come forward. So I think.
Well, houses are non-conforming because the zoning came after the house typically. So last time we made a change to try to address this issue.
Nineteen eighty-four. Is that what you mean?
What, no, I'm, I'm, last meeting.
Setbacks would be non-conforming.
Yes, yeah, sure, if you're in the setback over there.
So the language is to me, and my question is, and that I asked for town council, if you go up, is airspace more non-conforming and I think the argument is that there, it would not be because your foundation's already there, you're not going anymore back into the setback. You're going up, you're going up into airspace and I think this is the concern. So this is really my.
I, I think that we can say that you can't, you can't build within setback. By right.
Yeah, without, without getting a special permit. And you can't, and furthermore, if you want to put the second story in the house and then go out another six inches into the setback, you'd require a variance for that.
I understand.
Okay.
So line forty-one, this is change or substantial extension of the use. Is that the thing that you feel like we need to change to get this more, um, precise about the setback question? Because substantial extension of the use, maybe, does everybody know what substantial extension means? That does seem like it could be substantial.
So this is what, this is what Sarah would like to say in section seven point four.
Sarah, uh, Sarah.
Sarah Malish.
Sarah Malish.
This is her request.
Seven point four.
Okay, variance or special permit required.
That would be then, that's the header?
Yeah, that currently says variance required.
Okay.
Now she's saying variance or special permit required. Except as provided in section seven point five below, the reconstruction, extension or structural change of a non-conforming structure in such a manner as to create a new non-conformity shall require the issuance of a variance from the zoning board of appeals. Semi-colon, the reconstruction, extension or structural change of a non-conforming structure in such a manner as to increase an existing.
Do we have this, can we put this up?
I'll just put this up on the.
I mean, I thought it was going to be like one or two words, I cannot follow you anymore.
Well, just one sentence.
Well, I mean, I lost it like four sentences ago.
Okay, sorry, now I don't think I can get back on.
We get lost in this all the time, actually. Are we putting it up, what are we doing?
I'm, I'm, I have to sign off for the meeting.
Oh, okay. You're making, actually, I can give this to you.
Really?
I have, I have copies of this, I think.
Oh.
Does Sarah change it?
Yeah.
Oh, great, okay. Oh, this is the different, this is your, this is nine, section nine. Yeah, this nine, that's nine.
No, that's mine, no, mine.
All right, I got to figure out what.
Line one, I can, I can find it, you do it in the.
I'm, I'm getting on. I'm already joined by phone. Can you make me a? Okay, so. Okay. Okay, Chris, under variance.
Seven point four.
Changes on, hold on. Okay, except as front.
Okay, so. So you're going to type this in as I tell you.
I'm going to, yeah.
Uh, shall require the issuance of a variance. Third line down.
Well, it starts with except as provisioned by.
Right there, I got it.
There's no changes there.
Okay.
Or variance from the zoning board of appeals. Semi-colon, the reconstruction, extension or structural change of a non-conforming structure in such a manner as to increase an existing non-conformity such as.
This is raw nonsense.
Then in the next line, strike also, shall also require, shall require.
Where, um, so strike all this?
No, no, leave it, just go to shall also require.
So strike also.
At the yard.
If the shall.
And then, and then replace variance with special permit.
The, where, below or above where I am right now?
Below, just.
Shall, right here, ah.
Yeah.
We're going to require, so get rid of the semicolon. Such as the extension of exterior wall, shall.
Require the issuance of a special permit.
Okay, I beg. I just, where did you change it, not in the folder?
Yeah, there is, I think I tried to post it on there.
No, Sarah.
Who, Sarah?
This is in the folder.
I can't see it.
It's under the, um, I've created a new folder with those, the September twenty-sixth folder. Because I'm trying to keep them separate, Mary wanted them separate from each time we modified them.
All right, so I'm in the November twenty-second town meeting, zoning articles for review.
Yep, good, no, not articles for review, there's an articles for the September twenty-sixth. Article, November, it says articles with changes through nine twenty-sixth. Go up one level from where you are. Very hard to keep track of how to. Do you see my screen up there?
I can't really see that, that's why I'm like trying to look at it on my screen.
No, no, but that's the top.
I, yeah, I got it now.
Okay, good. Oh, now I've opened twice, that's going to be a problem.
Yeah, don't do that.
Yeah, up at the top there.
Okay, there we go.
Okay, could you just start by making two sentences? After ZBA period.
Right.
So this can make some kind of sense, you can read it like that.
Okay, thank you. So if you're increasing the non-conformity, you have to get a variance. And if you're doing a reconstruction or a structural change, you have to get a special permit.
That's correct, but that, but this does not apply to non-conforming single and two-family houses, which is what seven point five is.
Okay.
So there is one change to make in the first paragraph of seven point five.
Okay.
So.
Why would we have them separate first?
Because that's what the, that's what state law says.
Oh, that's the state law.
This is, this is where it's all coming from.
State law handles single and two-family houses separately and everything else.
Separately, that's actually a court decision.
I see, okay.
Which said that this, this doesn't apply because it would, it would so hinder the development of housing in the Commonwealth that.
I see, so is everything, could you just go back up a little bit?
I mean, let's just get this change for number seven point five.
Okay, so seven point five is just a, a simple little thing. Non-conforming single or two-family structures blah blah changed upon determination by the inspector buildings that such proposed reconstruction, extension, alteration or change does not increase or, or extend the non-conforming nature of said structure. And if we want to tighten that further to, to make it absolutely clear that you can't go in a second story into the setback, that's fine. Extended, you could say or extended.
Yeah, extended.
What does extend, what does extend mean?
Means goes further in.
Further in, further up, further along.
Does include up.
Well, that's what, the question is, does extend include up? We could say.
We could say extend.
Extended any direction.
Yeah.
Right.
Yes.
But we do already have that in line ninety.
No, that's a permissible change.
Right, I mean, it's a corollary to this, which is what is permissible
Yes, right.
is a thing that is within the setback and does not increase, does not result in any increase in building height in the area of encroachment, which is the setback.
Yeah, that's right, exactly.
So we have set up here, just to.
Yeah, this is just, we just say it again.
Okay. So I too looked at after, um, last night, I looked at this existing and I was very surprised to see that we have this non, uh, this, this determination of less detriment or not more detrimental, whatever it is, is in there already.
Yeah.
So I thought that was sort of our big, the big thing, but it's not.
I think that's, that's from the state, that's, the language is right from the state, the case.
Okay, I like these changes, um.
Could you please scroll back up some more so we can just see the whole paragraph of that one?
Australia is trying to promote a.
I heard that today, I was all for it, it's a straight talk law.
A straight talk law.
You heard that, convoluted. Language, I love it.
So I've actually written little scenarios for each of these cases, so we can, you can actually describe what's happening in front of which is.
So my, my problem with the second sentence is the, is grammatical, the.
Grammatic, the reconstruction or structural change.
No, it's that requiring the issue of a special permit is lost at the end of the sentence, okay, so the reconstruction of structural change of a non-conforming structure in such a manner as to increase existing non-conformity such as extension of your exterior wall, blah, dah, 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 shall require the issue.
But if we set this up with a comma.
Yeah. We just state the fact first and then go on.
And we say. Right.
And we say, issue of the, the actions.
A variance is required, a variance is required for, dah, 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 a special permit is required for, dah, 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 dah. Don't put it at the end of the sentence because you get lost by the end of it, right?
Yeah, that unprobative is come you.
A variance is required.
Or. Or if?
No.
When?
When.
When, yeah.
Good suggestion. Uh, from the ZBA, yeah.
But it's still the. Yeah, from the, a variance is required from the ZBA, put that up top.
Right, I will.
But it still doesn't quite make sense yet, from the ZBA.
Um.
So when the construction in such a manner as to increase the existing.
Mm-hmm.
When the reconstruction, for, I think it's more like.
When, when reconstruction.
I don't think it's when, I think it's for recon, for reconstruction, extension. Or structural change to a non-conforming structure.
To?
To a non-conforming structure. I guess you could argue that anyway. In such a manner as to increase the non-conformity or creating a conformity, period.
Right, so then.
Then a special permit is required by the, from the ZBA. For the reconstruction. Or structural change of a non-conforming structure in such a manner as to increase the non-consisting, existing non-conformity such as dah, 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 non-conforming distance within a required yard, period.
Okay. Wish I could view that with, in, I'm on the, on the online, I can review it without.
You can go to view and. You can go to view and see no changes, well.
I think that helps a lot.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chris.
There's a lot of brain cells died in this process.
So these are structures that are not single or two-family houses, right?
That's correct, yes.
And is that clear here? You just go read on to the next one because you're reading this paragraph and you think, well, this applies to my house until you get to seven point five. When you see this doesn't apply to my house.
Yeah, I'm putting this in a separate document for you.
Oh, okay, except it's provided in section seven point five below, okay. Okay. This is for the minutes.
Maybe if seven point five said exception for, not. Maybe if seven point five said exception for nonconforming single and two family residential structures. That's the heading, yeah.
So you said you had samples, is that for being here for, is that your intent?
Yeah, it was for the forum, yeah, maybe a cricket article.
Let's uh let's stick to the, any additional changes, any um additional changes?
Okay.
Additional changes.
Any change for this exception to nonconforming.
Section.
Exception for single and two families seven point five.
And I believe this language must be vetted by town council, I think that's very important.
So the other thing is that um Sarah suggested striking prior lawful, like a nonconforming structure.
Yeah, it doesn't.
Well, prior lawful is, it was lawful before you put the zoning on, right?
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
Yeah, so I think you need to keep that.
Okay, that's not working on it, that's a mark for rescue things. Okay, um.
When you send these to town council.
We make that change to seven five?
I will re.
They can, they contain the changes or?
Um I accepted all changes, but in this case, since I already sent it to them, I would probably keep the track changes on this one.
Okay, I would think that would be good.
Yeah. Okay, um I'll take a motion to approve the changes to section seven.
So moved.
Second, do I have second?
Second.
Um any other discussion?
Seven point five heading.
Say, say that.
Seven point five, if you would, just for a moment. Seven point five, exception for nonconforming single and family, two family residential houses.
I'll accept that amendment to my motion.
Okay. Exception for.
Okay, great, thank you, any other comments, all in favor?
Thank you. Aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed? Did you vote or do you abstain?
I don't know, I'm still thinking, it doesn't matter, I I am not in favor of this, so I'm gonna see now.
Okay. Okay, so we have that, that's a four to one uh vote, you wanna abstain or you wanna vote?
No.
Okay, vote uh, okay. Great, thank you, Chris, um. Okay, um. Seven forty five, just got to two of the heart ones. Let's take uh one of the housing ones, then we jump to, well, let's let's keep chugging through this, we gotta keep going. I'm gonna unshare. Okay, Chris, you had some, you had a proposal for the residential conservation.
Yes, uh President voted at the last meeting, I I thought about it quite a bit and I think we're, my vote was an error. I'd like to reconsider.
I have a motion to reconsider.
Do we have to do a common proceeding, so you had a handout. Is it number nine?
Number nine is nine point.
That's eighty use.
Oh.
Not eighty use.
Okay, so you have a handout for.
It's not eighty use, this is about the cluster.
Yeah, no, you don't, okay.
At the last meeting, we talked about uh how small a cluster could be and whether uh we could require for a cluster of three units, one of them would have to be affordable. And I thought that was a great way of promoting affordable housing, but in fact, all it would do is prevent clusters of less than six.
That's why I voted no for it.
That's why I voted no.
Yes, that's why I want to reconsider it. But I do think it's important to try to get affordable housing units built, and so I would like to propose that for clusters of less than ten, that a bonus of one unit could be uh a provided to a developer if that unit were affordable. So that would, uh I think Mary would be, I'm gonna speak for Mary, cause she's not here, I think Mary wouldn't like that because it would for a very small cluster, uh you're gonna probably say this too, that it would uh increase the density by a third on a very small lot. But I think in most cases, it'll be uh on bigger lots and that extra unit, the 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 need for affordable housing is so strong that I think it was considered.
So I think it actually goes in the opposite direction that we were at, I mean, I think the less than six is where we need to target this, this is who's going to use it, I mean, we have we don't have a lot of land to do it, so.
That's what I'm saying, exactly, so.
So there's no affordable with less than six.
So I I'm starting with a premise that is, in any case, it's better to cluster units together and have more open space than not. And if we're going to penalize a small cluster by saying you have to have an affordable unit, we're just gonna get a conventional subdivision with no benefit to the town.
So on a small lot, the benefit is?
A cluster reduces, creates more open space, reduces disturbance to the land, does all kind, it's it's better, it's just better to do it cluster.
I mean, that's that's if the topography agrees with it, right, it could not.
Of course, this is by special permit, so all it has, yeah, of course, you're right.
So I mean, there are lots of situations where it may not just make a difference at all.
So we don't issue a special permit in those cases.
And we still have no affordable housing, so what are we doing for affordable housing with units of less than ten?
So we're saying that we'll give you a bonus of one unit if you make a, make it affordable.
With six units.
Six units, three units.
You're saying less than ten, you're not setting a floor, yeah, my concern with with setting a floor of one affordable housing unit, because if you have
Less than ten.
a developer who wants to build five houses and has a lot that, you know, a parcel that can support five houses on it, then until the math works, what we've just done is taken our residential conservation cluster and made it not work, until you reach a certain number of houses.
So we could, right.
But but we are still going to get the growth in houses, so by having an R C C or other kinds of housing possibilities, that the housing growth is gonna happen, and so when unless we, you know, we were to put a tax on every single family house that got built and it was went to affordable housing, you know, you could say that there are, that you wanna that you want to um apply this to every house that gets built in Manchester, but the houses are getting filled and we don't have any control over the single family housing or the usual subdivision to do that affordable housing.
Well, I think to differ with this article, cause you took away the land minimum, we made it zero. So it used to be fifty acres and now we're down to zero.
No, it's five acres.
No, five, never fifty acres.
Well, I mean, it used to be fifty and that's why nothing was being made, so I mean, we've. Huh?
That was the.
That was a different bylaw.
That was a different bylaw. This was five, now we're trying to encourage.
This was five. Now it's down to none, right?
No, five, it was twenty and now it's five, I believe.
To, no, it was, in the existing bylaw, it's five.
No, it was no.
Oh, it's existing is five, okay.
And um now we're making it down to the um.
Lot size required for the lot.
District required for the district.
Yeah, right.
So, which will still get you a single family house, and a single family house, and a single family house under the conventional development, which will not add to our affordable housing unit, will not preserve environmental, environmentally sensitive land or provide open space or any other amenities to the house.
Right.
That's true. True.
So it's not a measurement against nothing, it's a measurement of business as usual, single family house development, which increases our the tally of affordable housing that we need, so it doesn't stop the, you know, sort of tally from ticking upwards. I think it's another method to build housing that's environmentally sensitive and can accomplish affordable housing, but it doesn't, it doesn't have to do all the heavy lifting for affordable housing, we have to accomplish it other ways as well.
Okay, so. We're not doing anything right now.
We are doing something right now.
We're changing a lot of zoning and we're not doing anything for affordable.
We are doing things for affordable housing and we're also trying to do better environmental stewardship, less land, you know, more land conservation, more open space, more amenities to the town as an option to typical single family housing development, which is how we got where we are today without affordable housing. We're looking, we're finding other methods to do that and other environmental benefits as well.
So Chris, what is the specific suggestion to?
So the spec. Did you buy my cheat sheet bag, where's my cheat sheet?
Yeah, yeah, it's this. Okay. I'm gonna bring up this section.
So, so what I, let's see. For clusters that would allow less than six units, the planning board may allow at its sole discretion no more than one additional resident- residential unit if that additional unit were affordable and eligible for listing on the state housing inventory.
Okay. So can we back up here, last time we added this basic affordability component, nine point two point eight. So you wanna remove, your motion is to remove that.
No, we had that before, but it was um, we didn't, what we, the only thing we added to that was a minimum of one.
Oh, minimum of one, right.
What we had before was you round up from point five.
Right, right, right.
Requires an ordinary.
I'm just trying to figure out where the.
Yeah, so only the, the only change.
It's in that, if you go back, and it was in that in the beginning there, right, the second line.
With minimum of one.
A minimum of one.
A minimum of one unit. Um.
A minimum of.
So change it to.
I'm gonna accept this change because we. That's what we had done, this is what we voted before, oh my god, I can't believe I just did that.
Did you delete it?
Control C, okay, there we go. Um. I'm gonna move this, I'm gonna copy this. I hate this online word that was just formed. And then density bonus, I think we're gonna need. Oh, we missed, we just reorganized.
That that was a sequencing thing, running basic portable first.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
But the change was also to add the minimum of one, that was what we voted on last time.
So you wanna accept this and then redline it, is that what you?
Oh, that might be easier, cause now I know it's. Yeah, okay, so we can accept that change. Right, cause this was just a.
And then we can redline.
Yeah, okay, now we're, now we're in that, alright. So the question here is this minimum of one, so you wanna strike as a condition of a grant of special permit for residential. A minimum of.
Why don't we come back to that one after we get the, where the density bonus belongs as a subsidy?
Right, well, a minimum of ten percent.
No, cause ten percent, that's where we had started before.
Yeah, we'd like if you add six, it would be point six, and it goes up to one.
Fractions, which is covered by that fractions of a lot as well.
Right, I think we can get rid of a minimum of one.
Maybe we should say, maybe we should say, just to be clear, for clusters that allow less than ten units. Cause that'd be the same.
You don't say that.
Where are you?
Uh, nine two eight.
Nine two eight. That's um.
This is the issue, fractions.
I mean, that's ex, so you have five units, are you have you have a parcel in District D that has double the slot space, so you can build two and then you're gonna give a density for three, so now you're in a tight area.
Yeah.
You're gonna have three units where you're gonna have two, and so the idea of what, six thousand square feet you need? Extra space, open space, I mean, there's just, the reality is there's gonna be no space.
In a, in the residential conservation cluster is probably not gonna work in District D.
Probably not.
I mean.
Then that's like, I feel like these are some of the things that we should talk about and take it out.
But that's why it's a special permit, we don't have to do it, it's not allowing it, I mean, it's not.
Okay, can we come back to how many special permits have been denied in the last five years?
The reason there there are so many given is because our zoning bylaws are so crazy that people have to get them.
So we're, we're trying to remedy things to to say what's wrong and not figure out remedies for this, I think the the point here is to try to
The higher view is to have that environmental friendly cluster.
Right, I don't think two lots in District D twelve thousand square feet are gonna just lock coverage.
And I think that's the higher view we wanna create.
But so if you started where you were before, at rounding up from the fraction, you get to point five, this says point six, but really, if you get to point five, that means you have five units.
Right. Right.
And only, so you can't do it on two units, and you can't do it on three units or four units, you have to get to a big enough piece of
Right.
land, which is a bunch of parcels, adjacent parcels and District D if you're doing that.
Maybe saying.
Only then do you get to the affordable, because it doesn't make sense for two units.
Yeah, if you have. If you had ten acres in Dist- District D, you could do it.
Sure, if if that came along.
I'm regarding ten acre parcels.
No, I think if you had ten, six thousand square foot lots adjoining, yeah.
Can we make the minimum of this whole thing applicable to ten, so we definitely get one?
No, cause we want clusters of less than ten units, cause that's for the, that's in the town's interest to do it.
But we're gonna increase the bonus, if you save some space, no, but there's lots of things in here that we can increase bonuses for. I'm saying that there's, you can serve open space, there's lots of bonuses here, like bonuses are used a lot, it's just kinda tossed around, you can get a bonus for this, a bonus for that, it's not, I mean, under special permits, I feel like we can make a bonus and it doesn't have to be affordable if it's less than ten, I mean, we're, there's not a lot of controls.
So your suggestion is to strike the minimum um the one, up here, minimum of one, minimum of one. And then you also suggested a.
You were suggesting a density bonus for a number under.
Affordable.
Under ten.
Which is already happening if you're at five or six or seven or eight.
Right, no, it's already here.
So. So it's already there, so it's only not happening in one, two, three, or four, where perhaps it doesn't make sense, because it does not want.
Yeah, I guess that's true.
Right, you've got it right here, the planning board may also award a density bonus of a minimum of one unit or ten percent of the total number, so one, if I have three units, I can get a bonus, I could get a density bonus of one if I have three units.
Okay.
Okay, so that's a motion to uh.
Wait a second, which section are you looking at?
That says.
Looking at the affordable.
For additional ten percent. One, a ma- a minimum of one for.
And the site over the open space.
Minimum of one or. Yeah. It's a one to one unit. Well, so, does that apply to under ten units or under five units? I think so, why wouldn't it?
Under five means four.
Four.
Doesn't apply.
Right, why, right, why does not apply?
With the frac, cause.
Cause you're rounding up at the fraction, no, but look at number three, the planning board may also award three, nine point two point it's nine, density bonus. The planning board may award density bonus of a minimum of one unit or ten percent, the total, so a one unit, if I have four units, I can, I get one more. Um, I can, if if I'm entitled to four, I could get an additional one, if I'm entitled to three, I could get an additional one if I make one of them affordable.
So long as you have the parcel that would allow you.
Mm-hmm.
So the ten percent rule is.
Right. No, if my parcel, let's say parcels are three acres, just for easy math, and I have three acres, I can put, and I wanna put three units clustered together. I could add a fourth unit for um if it's affordable.
Right.
And so does there need to be a minimum percentage of open space? As a percent of the.
I think there is, is is that twenty percent, is that up at the beginning?
Yeah, it could be a way.
Well.
Density bonus for resident conscious citizens, and the aggregate exceed twenty percent of the maximum number.
That's the bonus that's. Is there a requirement for?
I think you need a, I think you need to constrain on the the minimum of the open space.
It's twenties percent, but it can go, it can be very subjective.
Well, well, I think this, the special permit will, I mean, it has to show a benefit to the town.
Of course, yeah.
A amenity, so it can't just be the utility corridor or something. But I think we don't, we just wanna make sure that we're not doing the math so that by adding additional density bonuses, you're then undercutting the open space.
How would you state that?
Well, just just use D, I mean, the open, the the percentage is even less than that, like.
So can I just clarify that our current residential conservation cluster doesn't have. So can I just clarify that our current residential conservation cluster doesn't have a bonus for affordability?
No.
No, it doesn't.
Right. It, that's correct.
That's correct.
So we are, that's an important point, that we're adding a bonus for affordability, so regardless of whether it's perfect or whatever, it, we're making a step, a big important step.
Cautious.
Cautious.
A big important cautious step.
A big important cautious step. We are, we're making a step of a whatever size toward, toward improving affordability. Nine point two, it's still nine point two. I suggest that we simply, that's what we had before. So. We had added that minimum of one last time.
Oh, okay, well, so then, maybe, maybe I was misunderstood what I voted for, I don't know.
I believe. Okay, we had, so we had, so we're gonna strike of one unit.
We're gonna strike minimum of one unit.
Of one unit. A minimum of ten percent.
And I'd like to make a motion to line one twenty seven. And one twenty eight.
I need to know the section, cuz they don't, what line of resolution?
Oh, nine point, no, sorry, nine point two point one three, continuous open space.
Two point thirteen, no.
Yeah, continuous open space.
Oh, oh, twenty one, great.
A minimum of twenty percent of the parcel shown on the development plan shall be contiguous open space. What I'm trying to say is, you can't make that less than twenty percent with your density bonuses.
In, in, in no case.
In, and in no, and, um.
Shall be continuous open space.
Contiguous open space. Should be contiguous.
I think you have to put.
So number three is where I think the concern is, the contiguous open space shall be made unbuilt, provided that the planning board may permit up to ten percent of such open space to be paved or built on.
Which one are you on, Christine?
Uh, three.
Oh, number three, okay. Okay, let's, let's stick with nine point three.
But I think we may be able to capture it there.
Yeah, so that's a section of nine point two point one three, she's going to send bullet three.
Oh, yes, okay.
Uh, the planning board may per- permit up to ten percent.
Something like, provided that no density bonuses were allowed or additional.
Um.
Let's see.
I mean, it says, it doesn't give any exceptions, for, for, first of all, the, the, the section on a minimum of twenty percent of the parcel.
Three is the exception.
These, these are not exceptions.
You can build on it.
You're just, they're just clarifying.
You can pay up to.
You can build on it.
You make a best of both ways.
You can pay ten percent of twenty percent.
Yeah.
Right, so.
I'm just saying.
But you cannot, yeah.
D is in the water resource over district, I mean, we're adding bonuses, I mean, this is, I, we need to be concerned, I mean, about.
Will you strike that? That's why I had to do it, I mean, I, that is why to cluster housing in a water resource area.
Should we?
Is less pervious, less impervious, smaller, you know, less land disturbance.
What if, to.
If you're not giving a lot of bonuses, maybe.
So what's your suggestion on number three?
So my suggestion on number three is, um, I'm sorry, that was Christina who was saying, so, I was trying to get to nine point two point one three.
Yeah, but. Yeah.
Um, which, so a minimum of twenty percent of the parcel shown on the development plan shall be contiguous open space.
Regardless of density bonus.
Um, regardless of density bonus. Uh, um, which ma- which may not be, let's see, should be contiguous open space. Uh, which may not be, which may not be reduced by the density bonus.
I think I just put for a reason.
Regardless, doesn't really get what I'm after. So a minimum of twenty percent of the parcel shown on the development plan shall be contiguous open space. Which may not be reduced with the density bonus.
In. I think it's two point nine.
And, yeah.
Okay.
With any, with any density bonus recorded. That.
Okay, and then this one, the continuous open space must remain unbuilt upon. Except, how about except by permit, the planning.
Um.
How about get rid of paved? Get rid of, just say imperv- uh, pervious, get rid of it. Get rid of that clause altogether?
Yeah.
I mean, I feel like you're making another reason.
Well, I think it's saying you can pave it, basically, you can pave it for a walk or a shed, but you can't pave it.
For your open space.
Right.
But I think this is saying you can.
It's ten percent of it.
Ten percent.
Half of it.
No, 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 ten percent of twenty.
Ten percent of the twenty percent.
Twenty percent of the parcel, and then.
Which is half.
No, 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 ten percent of the twenty percent area.
No, no, no.
You take, here's.
Ten percent, twenty. You have two hundred square feet.
Here we go, here's your big parcel, here's twenty percent. You can take ten percent of that.
Ten percent of the twenty percent.
That's what you can pave.
To put your shed on or you're paving your pedestrian.
So ten percent of such open space.
Hmm, okay. If we can make that clearer, but I'm still not.
Yeah, I think upset open space would be good.
It says of such open space.
No, it said.
Uh, like structures associated to the.
Of required open space, would that make better, rather?
Do we need that number three at all?
Can I say required open space?
Required. Uh, no, I don't think that makes it clear.
Okay, such.
Such open space is the contiguous open space.
Okay.
You can say may per- may permit no more than ten percent, it means the same thing, but it sounds more like the negative than the positive.
I guess if we want the open space and it's in a dense area, why are we allowing more to be paved on? I just, to me, it seems.
Well, it's, uh, it's up to the planning board.
Yeah, they don't have to.
May permit, doesn't say.
If somebody wants to have a nice walkway through to their garden.
Or to Powder House Hill.
With their, your, yeah, whatever.
Or something. And, and up, I think, you know, an accessible path for wheelchairs to go see a garden or something. Okay, um, any other motions? We have, um, a modification, two modifications. Um. One is to uh, th- those are modifications from previously.
Do we really want the, um.
Delete the one, I'm sorry, unit. It's those modifications I'm below are tonight's of ten percent. And the other one is this, which may not be reduced by density bonus in section nine point. So we can't reduce the, the density bonus. Um, any other, can you reduce the motions?
Just wanna, nine point two point one four, contiguous open space at the applicant's election be conveyed to, that sentence is funny. Shall, um, be conveyed to the town or its conservation commission, I mean, do we really want a teeny tiny parcel in the middle of somebody's backyard? Do we want that liability?
That's a good question.
I think the town has to vote to accept things that have come to it. You don't just get, you can't just get land, you have to vote to accept it.
Right, and if you put it in conservation, that's an overlay, but it's a deed restriction, it's not, it's.
No, the conservation commission can, and the town can own land without a, without it being a deed restricted.
Okay.
I just feel like we're taking some owners off the applicant here to like mow their lawn and putting it on us.
Does anyone?
Sorry, I'm trying to catch up, but it's nine, the fourteen.
Do we really want that? Do we want to put that in the applicant's hands?
Well, I think it's, I think it's more thinking about the parcel, so there are a couple of things. One is if it's in a neighborhood, it might maintain a pla- a.
Park.
Park.
Thomas Park.
Um, a.
Wetland.
A wetland, um, yeah, wetland, or a, a park is sort of more typical. But in a larger parcel, it could be conveyed to the town for connection because it's the backland that connects one parcel of conservation land to another, and so we wanna be able to have people try and traverse it. An owner might not want the liability of that.
So what does that language say? I think Christina had a point though, it was that, that developers.
It says it's at the applicant's election.
So maybe you should say the applicant may offer to the town?
That's what I'm saying, I feel like they can say, okay, but.
The applicant at the, okay, uh, I think it's open space.
It says at the applicant's election.
Yeah.
Well, so the town's election.
Can we just say the other way, can we just say at the town's election?
Town's election is what you're trying to say, I think.
Well, the applicant has to.
The applicant has to, I mean, it's a mutual agreement, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The mutual agreement of town and applicant or something.
I just don't want it to be ho- held over our head saying, okay, I can do this and, but you need to take this land and maintain it.
No, I think, I think it's a good point.
Okay, so upon.
Who did say, the contiguous open space shall at mutual agreement by town and applicant be conveyed to.
Or it's not just town though.
Who else isn't?
Well, there are three options, the town, a nonprofit organization, or a trust jointly held in common by the owners of the lots. So basically condo, uh, like a association.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
But through our special permit, we have to.
Right.
Offer, may offer the contiguous open space to. I think, I think that's fine, because you can't, if, people aren't gonna take ownership of open space unless they, you have to agree to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think by definition.
No, I think that's good.
Okay, let's wait till she goes back to it. Any other, um. Okay, thank you, Chris.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, so, um, as soon as Christine comes back, we'll vote it. Senior housing and ADU. And workshop.
We're making, doing better than I thought we were doing today.
Workshop's gonna be easy, nobody figured it all out. You had, um, cast out a handout last time on the affordable, on the ADUs.
Yes.
Is that still something you wanna talk about?
Um, yes.
Okay, so let's make sure everybody has got their eyes. And I had a piece on this one. Everybody wanna stretch?
Yes.
So I'm gonna do my visuals when we're stretching.
Are there people on the meeting besides you? Kathy.
Uh, we take a break or take a quick break? I just wanted to get.
Oh, look at that.
Okay, that's the one station. Okay, this goes on this one too. This one is. Yeah, which ones we separate line together, we saw.
So you have the workshop right here in front of our eyes. You can put some here, Sarah. Sarah.
Yeah, I'll put the housing ones there. This one is, we know this was wrong, so you get the idea. Okay. Now that's my, I was gonna bring, I was gonna go to Staples to get some boards, but I didn't have time. To just demonstrate. I think we can use our imagination.
Yeah.
Oh. So, um, we can actually all start looking at this too. I actually do find it's easier to use paper than chip. So this is from Mary and Gary. Careful. That's the one. It's straightforward, but. Okay. We'll take it up after we, okay, let's talk about, um, that's what I share. Okay. So, cluster dwelling units.
Okay. So, uh.
No.
Had some handouts. No, we didn't watch very good.
No.
You guys voted on that last one, I'm sorry.
Oh, we haven't voted on the last one yet.
Did you vote on the last one?
No.
I'm sorry, no, my name's.
I'm sorry, we were waiting for you, sorry.
Um, okay, sorry, I'll take a motion for the changes to the article, um, for residential conservation clusters as presented.
So moved.
Uh, so Chris moved and Ron seconded. Um, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, any opposed? Christine, we have four to one. Great, okay, thank you. Um. Now, we are going to talk again about ADUs.
Okay. What I would like to propose, that we talked about, breaking the ADU warrant into two warrants. And there are a couple of reasons for doing it, but the most important one is that by separating them, the one would pass by, require two thirds vote and the other by a simple majority at town meeting. So they have to be broken up anyway. Um, and the other thing is that.
So why do they have to be broken up anyway?
Because one of the votes requires a two thirds majority and one just requires a simple majority.
Oh, you're saying that as we've written it, it required.
Two thirds for the whole thing.
Well, no, the, we would actually have to break it into two. I think we would have to break it into two.
Yeah.
Already.
Exactly.
Why?
Because there are two votes, one is requires a two thirds vote and one requires a simple majority.
I thought based on the size, it was two thirds.
Land use, is it?
No, nine hundred, the reason, anything under the nine hundred square feet is the fifty percent.
That's why the nine hundred. Nine hundred square feet is.
And because we're mixing the two.
But there are also political reasons for doing it, uh, which is, I think the most important thing we can do is loosen up the ridiculous constraints on ADU development now, which, uh, is in the existing bylaw, which says you have to have a double lot and your house has to be built before nineteen eighty four and you need four parking spaces. So what I'd like to do is have that be one motion to simply strike those, um, sections of the current bylaw.
So I had proposed that as well in the motions we never got to. Oh, that's.
You only think on the same page, I guess.
Yeah. The motion, that motion page that we had, if you look at the very back, put number, um, I said, I actually suggested adding two articles. The first, so I actually wrote them out to see if the town modify section nine point one of the zoning bylaws to delete section nine point one point two. Uh, except in single residential District D, the lot size shall be two times the limit, you know.
Yep.
So, and then, and the single fa- and delete the single family dwelling shall have existed on lots as of March first, and renumbering the remaining sections.
And to replace.
And require three purpose spaces.
Yeah, three purpose spaces.
If I can pull that, um, up. So let's, let's talk about the big picture first, then we can talk about the specific language. Then the second change that I had suggested was to modify the use table to add a four family member after employee and delete the word existing garage, before garage, so that's a separate issue. So do we, as we think about the article nine or article nine point one, or nine point one, whatever that is.
Thirty one.
I know, but I need to find that. I have them all organized. Oh, need to come back to that.
Can I stop talking?
I know, we stopped talking.
Just checking.
Good to check.
I was gonna call back in. Are you still there?
It's good to check, Kim.
There's still.
Well, usually you're checking on me.
I guess while there's a dull in space, I'd like to make a note for the record that I have a fundamental problem with this motion being brought forward after one of our planning board members who brought this has not shown up for the majority of the last five months of planning board meetings.
So noted, that we, I think we voted as a board to move it forward, so it's on the table.
I'm just saying, I think there's a problem that someone brings it forward and then doesn't show up.
Well, it was brought by a group of people, I don't think.
Which the member was a leader of.
I think at this point, it's now owned by us collectively. I, I share your frustration on that. Just, but, but I don't think it's like relevant to this anymore. I mean, so, um, okay. So you think as written, it is a two-thirds vote? It's unclear.
It's, I guess it's unclear, but I, but it is also, you know, this is a very controversial issue and I don't wanna throw the baby out with the bathwater.
Right.
So I'd like to do this first. So at least we can have my special permit, accessory dwelling unit, which you can't get now.
Right.
At all.
So my suggestion would be that we leave the existing as-is and assuming that it's a fifty percent. And that we add a Article twelve, if you had, does everybody have the motion list? Make, might be easier to make a copy of.
Eleven, Article eleven?
Uh, no, the motion list that I did along a couple meetings ago.
Yeah, I remember.
You have it at page six.
Yeah.
Yeah, page six, the very last page, I added two motions. And my, or two articles. And my thought was if the ADU passes, if this Article thirteen passes, we move to pass over the, the, um.
I guess we can do it in any order.
Well, I think it makes more sense to do it with the, the Article eleven, the existing ADU first. If that fails, then the other stays in effect. The existing one is still in effect. So then we would move to modify the existing one.
Uh huh, okay.
I think sequentially. So I was not making any changes to the existing one, but to simply assume that that, if the proposed bylaw does not pass, then, um, uh, we would make a motion to strike the acceptance you family district and the nineteen eighty-four and to renumber and to require three parking spaces.
I don't have any problems with that, it was, I mean, I think it works either way. One way we make the changes and then it gets superseded by the second one, or it gets, you know, either way it works. So I don't care how it goes.
Yeah, and I think we do need town council's advice about whether the proposed bylaw is a fifty percent or.
I was gonna say, why don't we have that yet?
Yeah.
Why don't we have that yet? I mean, like, why don't we know that?
Never given it to them yet, that's why.
Gave it to them in the spring, no?
Unclear what was given to them in the spring, cause we, we, they, because the warrant was never posted. It didn't go to town council. I didn't send it to, we didn't send it to town council, I don't know. But, so. So that's my suggestion, is we leave this, um, that we don't make any change, any further changes tonight to the but, and that we take up adding Article twelve, which is, um, so I'm gonna move to add a new Article twelve to see if the town will modify section nine point one of the zoning bylaws to delete section nine point one point two point two. Except in single residential District E, the lot shall be two times the minimum lot size is determined. I think that should probably be in quotes. And B, the single family dwelling shall have existed on the lot as of March first.
Aren't you?
Those are, we wanna delete those.
Isn't that what you just said you'd do? Sorry, I'm confused.
What?
I thought you just said that you didn't wanna amend the existing regulation.
No, no, this is, this is adding a new article.
To the warrant.
So.
Okay.
Adding, and this is not, we have an existing ADU bylaw.
Yeah, right, I get that.
So this would, uh, this would be passed over, if this first one that we've been working on for many months.
Yep.
Did, failed.
Yeah.
Then we would mo, then we would take up the modifications.
So those are the three paragraphs that follow, so you move to add the new article, if that fails, then you.
Correct.
Then you do these.
Right, so you would move, we would move to pass over, because it would make no sense to do it. And we could do them in either order, um. I just think it's more dangerous. It's confusing. I think it's more, it's less confusing.
No, it's fine, I think it works fine, it's a one.
What is, what is this handout that you, I think you just handed out?
Yeah, what is this handout, this is, this handout you did?
And on page three, it's talking about a single driveway entrance if possible, what's this?
Oh, that was, uh, so at our last meeting, that was discussed. ADU, remember you wanted to have, add a single driveway to, that, we couldn't put in a second.
Single driveway entrance if possible.
So why are we taking out existed as of March eighty-four?
Because a lot of houses have been built since March of eighteen eighty-four. That wouldn't be eligible for.
I think it was twelve or so.
Accessory dwelling.
So I think it needs to be built by something.
Why does that, why is that relevant, what the date is?
Yeah, it could be seventeen fifty, who cares?
Well, I think the, the bigger question is, is if it was to build in twenty twenty-two.
If you can build it tomorrow with an ADU.
Well, it has to be a pre-existing house.
Well, that's my point, if you don't put a date, then where does that, where is that captured?
It's captured by the calendar.
This doesn't say that, you said, this doesn't say that you can't build a house with an ADU.
No, it says, because it, because the, well, this, my motion does not, but the existing says an owner of a single family dwelling may apply to the Board of Appeals or Special Department for the construction of one accessory dwelling unit to such dwelling. So presumably.
You could say to an existing dwelling.
Well, that would, okay, we could add existing. Then we have to.
So you build it, it doesn't have a stove, it has a separate entrance, you build it like it's a two-family or a home with an ADU and then you go to the ZBA and apply for the ADU?
Special permit, yeah.
Okay, that seems ridiculous.
As opposed to what? Saying it's gonna be a week old or to a year old? Is that gonna make any difference to anybody? Three years old, it's just arbitrary.
Well, I think the. Oh, no, not necessarily, I think the intention was to create new housing within an existing structure, not to build new housing, like bigger, so you can have a nine hundred square foot ADU, I think, I mean, I think we're kinda defeating the purpose of the intent of the original bylaw.
What are you proposing then?
I like the date, I like some kind of a date.
And what, what would that be?
What if it was the single family dwelling shall have existed on the lot for two full years? And she'll have had a certificate of occupancy.
I think it's just being arbitrary, why not one year?
Well, I, a, a duration. Because then we, we don't have to change it, presumably, see, this was added in nineteen eighty-seven, so it was only for, for the last three years. So we could, you know. That, I guess maybe you, I'm, I'm trying to get this to, right. Over the finish line here, that's what I'm trying to do.
I like the date that was there, I think we're kinda pulling it out with high conversations and pulling it out at the last minute.
Eighty-four is totally arbitrary, it's meaningless.
Okay, so that we have different opinion, we have a difference of opinion on that, let's not disparage people's opinions.
I'm sorry, no, I didn't mean to disparage it, I don't understand why nineteen eighty-four is relevant.
Okay, so, so it's not gonna be a matter of opinion.
But, they're concerned about, um, existing, what, what, yeah, is it a duration issue that would?
I think it's, to me, it's, it's about, the house, house exists and then we, um, so.
To me, I feel like a developer could take advantage of this and build a new home with another additional, I think the intent of this original bylaw was for the heater District D to use existing homes or wherever, to use what we had, not to build something with an additional unit and make the exist, or the new structure even bigger. So I feel like we're not being true to what the original intent was.
The ADU, I mean, you couldn't build a single family house with an ADU and a separate kitchen though, right? I mean, you would still have to go through a special permit, let's just say we didn't have anything about duration or an existing house. You would have to go through a special permit as a developer to build a house with an ADU and with a separate kitchen and all that, right? Is that, I think that's what it's asking. So you can't build them by right. No, maybe I'm not right about that. This is.
I think you could, you just don't put a stove in it.
Well, you still have to apply for the special permit.
For what?
For the ADU.
Okay, what if, can I make a suggestion that, that we strike A and modify B, a single family dwelling shall have existed with an occupancy permit for two full years? I'm just trying to.
That seems, that seems like arbitrary work.
Arbitrary, what?
That seems like it could work.
Yeah, I mean, I'm trying to.
I mean, a developer's not gonna hang around.
And renumber the subset, sub, the, um, uh, remaining subsections and then what do we have, the parking.
So you're saying the single family dwelling, which should have existed for the past two years?
Right, yeah, and change the three spa, four spaces to three vehicles.
Change C.
Change C. Change C. I think what we would do is just list a new section nine point nine. Replace nine point one, uh, point two. Uh, rewrite A, uh. If we rewrote A, B, and C, I'm trying not to open up the can of worms on the rest of it. Um, and simply say, um, just say in the, in the, the lot size shall be, the minimum lot size is determined by zoning. Not two times. So the minimum lot size should be determined by zoning, so strike the, the lot size shall be. The lot size shall be, strike two times the minimum. So just the minimum lot size is determined. The single family dwelling may have, shall have existed with an occupancy permit for two full years and off-street parking for at least three vehicles.
Well, we had added lot coverage compliance, do we need in the the big one, do we need to add it here to?
We probably do, but I think what we're trying to do is, it's gonna be late at night, we're already late at night now. And I think what we're trying to do is simply get rid of the two big problems.
Losing nothing.
Not try to fix everything, cause then we go down the rat hole of what we just talked about. So that's what I'm trying to do, is just, if the, the one that we've been talking about all along fails, reduce the lot size and get rid of the nineteen eighty-four and reduce parking.
So you're saying you have to have the, you have to meet the minimum requirement of the lot size?
Yeah.
But that's gonna, that's not gonna work for half the town.
You don't have to have the lot size?
No one's got the proper, good lawyer.
I surely do.
You do, but I sure don't.
You said no one, I mean, I know plenty of people that do.
I'm saying, I said, no, I did not say, so when I said half the town. Half the town is not necessarily you.
So if they don't have a lot size, how do they have the parking? I mean, there's just so many things that you.
So in, so in my district, you need two acres. I think there's room for a parking lot there with an ADU.
So, I mean, I thought that was the whole basis of this, I don't think we ever talked about not having the lot size.
Well, no one in District E has got two acres, a very few people. And it was done on purpose, frankly. To stop people from changing their houses. So I'm opposed to that. I think you do have to meet lot coverage requirements.
Don't you just strike the whole thing in that case, except for the single District Residence E?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
All right, take that out.
And it's by special permit, so the, so the ZBA can say, your lot's too small, you can't do it.
And again, how many have they said no to?
Oh, jeez.
One.
Well, that's.
One.
Because you can't.
Okay, let's not, let's, let's talk about this, um, my motion, which is, okay, I'm gonna rephrase it. To see if the town will modify section nine point one and to delete A, nine point one point two point two, deleting A and modifying B to say the single family dwelling shall have existed within, with an occupancy permit for two or more full years. And renumbering the remaining sections.
Four, that's three.
You wanna change the parking?
Parking to three.
Yeah, change C, parking to, from four to three.
So moved.
All right, motion, do I have a second? I, I'm gonna second it. So Ron seconded, first, moved that and I seconded, um, any other discussion? Um, all in favor?
Okay.
And, uh.
Surprise.
Okay, that's fine, let's, we all have a right to vote for or against them. Okay, my second, um, additional article was to see if the town will modify section four point two, the use table, which I hope and pray has been adopted. If it hasn't, we'll just pass over this, cause it will be in. Section E, number seven, and note thirteen, by inserting or family member after employee deleting existing before garage. So. This is because we are, the zoning Board of Appeals is getting, the employee exemption is obsolete. And, uh, largely unenforceable anyway. And people are saying that their mother is employed to take care of the dog or whatever, whatever is happening. So, um, let's just, the reality is people are adding, and this is, I was mistaken when we originally talked about this, that this was an ADU, this is just a
somebody's.
Somebody's, this is an accessory housing. This is separate from the ADU, which is really what's happening. This is really the, the issue, and there are currently no regulations around this, and I think that goes squarely into the future things that need to be buttoned up.
I agree, in fact, there probably should be a size limitation on these things.
Right, I totally agree. But the, we haven't got, we have no, we have not held a hearing on that. We have held a hearing on the use table. Therefore, we can amend the use table.
What was the existing garage in reference to? And why? It's a note, it's now a new garage, it was an existing garage before, what, what was that in reference to?
That was just Sarah Melish's suggestion to take out existing garage in the note, I'm not, I'm not one way or the other. Well, it might be less complicated to worry about the garage piece.
So if we're, if we're amending the note to the table, could we not say, provided that the unit is not larger than twenty percent of the size of the existing house? Or is, or my?
Wait a minute, what, what are you saying, Chris?
I wanna try to limit the size of these things.
Of what things?
These employee, family-owned, family member houses.
Well, I think some of these are, is why the date was there, right, they're pre-existing, they're.
No, this is not actually, this is not, they, the accessory dwelling unit is separate.
No, no, that's what I mean, these are, these are old carer homes.
They can be, but they aren't necessarily. They can be, but they aren't necessarily. There's no requirement.
When you read the bylaw, the, it's an accessory use that's allowed by special permit, not, not subject to the accessory dwelling unit provisions. It's a.
Yes, but I think the assumption was, that's why some of these dates are there. They're not, they are existing.
They're not.
But this, this is not, this is not, this employee exemption has nothing to do, does not have a date with it.
Can we, we can read it.
Well, no, I think you have to go to the four point.
The notes table in the.
So if you go to our existing bylaw.
Such as.
Yeah, to where?
Five point six.
As part of an existing garage stable or other existing structure approved by special permit of the Board of Appeals, family living quarters for and to be occupied only by an employee of the owner occupant of the dwelling, while such garage, stable, or existing structure approved by the Board of Appeals is an accessory use. Said employees must be employed on the premises.
So. And that's currently allowed by right? Or this is a special permit?
No, it's a special permit.
So I think the concern with that one is they're not accessory, they're not accessory dwellings, right? So they don't need a kitchen. Like every employee, if you're the cook, you don't need your own kitchen. Like you could.
It's a separate, it's a separate dwelling unit though. It's, what does it say, a family?
It doesn't say dwelling unit though, accessory building.
Family, families.
Garage.
Family living quarters.
Yeah.
Living quarters. That would sound like a kitchen to me.
To be occupied by an employee.
Family living quarters? So, but let's say family living quarters. We have borders. Those aren't necessarily need a kitchen, right? So.
Not necessarily, but, but the point is, is the Board of Appeals is now granting special permits.
Under this exception.
Under the except for to allow mothers-in-law to.
No, 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 I know.
So I think on this issue, we have two choices. One is to try to remedy it, at least with just a simple adding the word family member was my suggestion, cause that's what's happening. Um, and we could, I, I would think that while we should limit it to twenty percent or thirty percent or twenty-six percent, that uh, that it's too late now to have that discussion.
Okay.
Um, so my suggestion is that we just add, and Sarah Melish wanted to add fam, this is a request
Yeah.
from Sarah Melish. I think we can strike, not worry about the existing, existing in the garage.
I agree.
Okay.
Um, but uh to add family member, and it's, that's um, that's my suggestion, was keep it simple. Get rid of the deleting except, so after employee, period.
Did you make a motion to do that?
Yes, my motion is to see if the town will mod, to add it Article thirteen, to see if the town will modify section four point two let's see, the use table, section E, number seven, and note thirteen by inserting quote or family member after quote employee.
Period.
Period.
Period, yeah.
So that's my motion.
I'll second it.
Um, any other discussion? All in favor? That was a five to nothing um vote, yeah. Okay, so that's accessory dwelling units. Senior housing. And then we have one, we have to go back to twelve.
Senior housing.
So one thing. Okay, senior housing, um, we said we would think about it, and anybody have, we did say we would ask Sue to look at Hamilton, and I have received nothing from.
I looked at.
But you looked at Hamilton.
I did look at Hamilton.
Okay.
So Hamilton combines it with their farm, something. I mean, it's very low-density development. It has all of the same kind of development restrictions or standards that we have. It's just, they're doing the same thing that our existing one does. They keep repeating all of them.
All of the stuff.
All the stuff in it, so it makes it look much more comprehensive than it actually is.
Well.
They do have a table which shows different acreages. You can have a certain number of units. But it's really not applicable to Manchester because the parcels of land are so much bigger in Hamilton than they are here.
They put a maximum period, right? I think it's a hundred total, fifty per year, fifty, so
Sure.
they have an absolute minimum. They have, you can't have two senior centers, you know, with an X amount of feed from each other. They're trying to eliminate you know, emergency services from overcrowding one neighborhood. So I think they do a lot of things that we just haven't because we're so much more dense. I think there's some concerns that we.
I think it's the kind of prescriptive uh requirements that hinder good design by doing all these things.
So I think that, um, I thought a little bit about your comments last time, actually, and I think you made some good points. My thought on this is that we should try to advance it at this town meeting and that it need, it, we're not gonna get a flood of them in the next year. And then we should put on our work plan to um sort of say, here's, now, now here's how we're going to regulate them, and we could probably do a build-out analysis of, of what might happen.
I suppose we could say that the playbook can issue regulations.
Yes. That's a good idea.
Well, Chris, I think the concern I have with this is that everything that's listed in the senior housing by law is all commercial senior housing. It's not real housing. You're capturing the fifty-five plus or the fifty is in the residential conservation cluster. This doesn't capture a normal fifty-five standalone development.
Could.
Yeah, it could, sure.
That, ours doesn't though.
Yeah, it does. Independent living, that's what independent living is.
Um, you're allowing, and I think the article's a little.
We.
Huh?
We. We voted it, so it's a we. The article. Okay, go ahead.
Oh, what did I say?
You.
You.
You. Oh, no, no, you wrote it, you, no, 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 you wrote the newspaper article. You wrote the article, and it says that there's no zoning that changes any commercial use, which I think that statement is false, because what we do, huh?
Okay, keep going.
Because these are commercial uses, so we are changing. We're allowing for-profit assisted living facilities in any district. So for me, that newspaper article, sorry, Chris, you did write it, I think, wrote, you wrote, um, is false and misleading a bit. So I don't think we capture the fifty-five plus. I mean, the last conversation that we had, we were leading that to the residential conservation cluster, which um, it's not, to me, captured in this, the senior housing.
What would you suggest?
I like Hamilton's personally. I think we're missing out on the fifty-five plus.
Fifty-five, um, our Hamilton fifty-five plus facilities are probably both owner-occupied, like condos, and um commercial apartment, rentals. They must be both. They would allow both, right? So I think our bylaw would as well.
Yeah, it would. There, there is no difference between an independent living senior facility and an apartment complex for or condo complex restricted.
I don't think it's captured in our definition. Like the definition for this bylaw isn't captured in the definitions of the actual definitions.
Well.
That may be true.
It's not in the definition, I guess.
Is it a big definition?
There are definitions of senior housing that came from Mark Bobrowski.
I'll have that.
So our definitions under this say senior housing facility, which a fifty-five plus development is not a facility.
How is it a facility?
Well, our definitions say senior housing.
State definition, yeah.
In, in section two. Senior housing has a number of sub-definitions. Assisted living facility, continued care, independent living facility, which be a facility providing apartments for rent with optional services, a long-term care facility, and senior housing, which is housing for persons over the age of fifty-five, subject to senior housing laws as defined herein. So I think we do define it in the definitions as a, oops.
But our definition in section nine is only senior housing facility. It should be more broad to say senior housing.
Okay, that's, I think that's.
I mean, this is what I brought up last week, which everyone said that was captured in RCC, and I'm like, it, it actually isn't. And this doesn't capture fifty-five plus.
So if we change senior housing facility, which is simply defined as in our, I think you make a point. You, it's defined as an assisted living facility, continuing care, independent living facility, or long-term care facility, whether operated as a freestanding or in combination of other types, where senior housing is more broadly encompassing by our definitions of all of the types.
Strike the word.
Yep.
So the, the definitions say facility, or you're striking that word?
No, I'm striking the word facility. I'm gonna pull it up.
So I don't know. So then you get down to like nine point three point five accessory uses. I don't know. We use senior housing facility a lot in here, so that's why I'm not sure how changing that definition affects the rest. The operator of the senior housing facility. I don't think there is any operator. If you develop a ten-unit cluster for seniors, that's fifty-five plus restricted, there's no operator. You could just buy the condo. I mean, that's what was being developed.
No, there's, there's the condo association.
It's not the owner though. Not an operator. It's a legal document. It does, the definition doesn't work with this. It's different. The definition of a senior.
You mean the senior housing.
Facility is different than senior housing. The facility doesn't capture the fifty-five plus definition in our definition. That's the problem.
If we change the definition in our definitions to senior housing facility, then senior housing facility would include all of those things. That would be easier than trying to.
I know, but I think that's a legal thing. I think that might be a state definition.
Or we could say um.
Senior housing facility for people over fifty-five?
Senior housing, what if, what if we said um nine point three, senior housing, uh, oh, so definition, see section two, senior housing facility.
We can strike facility from there.
Yeah, from there.
And then you've got all of the definitions under senior housing. And I guess then
And we guess.
You can just leave accessory uses as is, and if it's a facility, they, they have to apply, right?
All right.
Yeah.
So if I'm just taking out facility.
On nine point three point two.
And three point three.
Just on line twenty-one, the planning board may grant a special permit for senior housing.
Senior housing. So get rid of senior housing in one.
Well, we don't have any senior housing before the date of the adoption of this.
So now we do um.
We do, the planes and the bar.
Planes.
Oh, you wouldn't call that facilities though? I mean, that's a.
No, it's not.